Okay, I got seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Here.
Counsel Stenit? Youth representative? Counsel Savage?
Here.
Counsel Flack?
Here.
Counsel Salisbury?
Here.
Counsel Urban?
Present.
Mayor Gow.
Here. Item three, there's no items to be added to the agenda, brings us to item four, National HIV Testing Day Proclamation. Whereas the medical condition known as HIV and AIDS is still a prominent and national concern with 38,000 new infections each year. In the United States, in 2018 alone, 1,739 youth under 19 were diagnosed with HIV, and almost 11,000 Oregonians were diagnosed with HIV within the last 39 years, with approximately 230 new cases of HIV occurring each year in the state, and whereas one in seven individuals are unaware that they are HIV positive, and only four in 10 Oregonians have been tested for HIV, and whereas testing is critical to the HIV prevention, getting tested and actively managing HIV through treatment can not only reduce mortality but improve quality of life, but also reduces the risk and the spread of HIV from person living with HIV to their partner by 96%, and whereas each year on June 27th, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, aids.gov, and other national and local entities across the United States organize National HIV Testing Day. This initiative is a national challenge for knowing one's HIV status. It encourages individuals to obtain their HIV status either through in-person or self-testing, and whereas city officials are exceptionally situated to increase awareness and understanding among their constituents that all Americans need to be tested for HIV infections, not only to protect their own health, but also to work towards eradicating HIV and AIDS. Now therefore, I Jeffrey D. Gow, Mayor of the City of Cottage Grove, do hereby proclaim June 27, 2021 as National HIV Testing Day, and as a day to build awareness that knowing is the power to encourage all residents to obtain their HIV status. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal in the City of Cottage Grove to be affixed on this 28th day of June 2021. Okay, that brings us to item five for appearances of interested citizens for not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Invisible speakers must be recognized by presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council's discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comments at this time. However, the council may take their comments under advisement and discussion for action or for their council meeting. So I have one that is written in. It's from Samantha Duncan, 961 territorial highway, and she is writing to express her thanks and support for the library, staff, and the library in general, and the role that they play in a betterment of our community. Libraries are essential services for any community and are often served as a lifeline to isolated members of our community as well as families with small children and few resources. Natasha and Becky have been doing an incredible job of keeping up with the day-to-day library activities, curbside delivery, library in the park, patron communication, interlibrary loan, coordinating COVID-19, resource sharing, weeding, collecting, developing, and so much more. I hope that the library be fully staffed and open to the public within the next few weeks. Thank you. Excuse me. And then I have two signed up to speak that are in chambers. Annie Odine? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Annie Odine, and I live at 31984 Nichols Lane, Cottage Grove. And I have a request for some answers to some questions about the herbicide use at the Armory. I saw two signs went on either side of the building. I think it was the middle of May, and I have these questions, and I'd like Fay Stewart to answer them, and I have them written down, and I'd like a written response to these. So can I hand them to you? So just in general, what I want to say, I was part of the group who worked very, very hard to get South Lane School District to stop using herbicides. They were using herbicides, and there is a law. I'm really rusty on all of this stuff because I've been gone, I was gone for eight months, and then also COVID-19, but Krista Parent did call a moratorium, and then there were a group of us who did a lot of weeding. Herbicides are originally from chemical weapons. That's their origin. And so they're very dangerous chemicals, actually. The chemical companies like to tell you that they're safe. The safety, quote unquote, "safety," what would I call them? What they say is safe is generally for grown men. I was watching two four-year-old boys play in the area that was applied, the herbicide was applied, and there's a lot of options that are much better, much better, instead of using these chemicals. And people do not like to be poisoned. I'm surprised that there was a sign. I thought that was interesting. There is in the law that the school district has to follow. They do have to post signs also, which they were not doing, but anyway. I think it's very important at this time that we are very careful about what we do. The straw that broke the camel's back, it may seem like a small thing, but it really is about a way of thinking. And fighting with nature doesn't work. She abhors a vacuum, and if there's something that's not there, she's going to put something that she covers over, she covers herself. And so I really want people to think about that. I want peace with earth, not on earth. That's a domination. Peace with earth. There are many different ways of doing, taking care of that, that area. And I'm really concerned that we're using those kind of herbicides in places that are public, where kids are. And so that's my concern, and I'll really look forward to hearing back in writing about those questions that I have. And I really appreciate you all being here. It's kind of lonely here, but I'm glad you enjoy one another. I'm glad to see that. So thank you for listening to me.
Thanks. And our next person that signed up is, or last person to sign up is Bruce Kelch.
Bruce Kelch, live at 78340 Holterman Road in Cottage Grove. I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Library, and still present at that. We've been kind of dormant this past year, but we look forward to be more active. I want to echo Samantha's thanks to the librarians that have done a yeoman's job of maintaining library services during the pandemic. It's been quite challenging. I had a very good conversation with Richard last week, so I understand some changes that are going on in terms of restructuring the library and the changes in personnel that are taking place and still need to be hired. I would encourage Richard, as I would encourage the city, to really share publicly information about the changes in the library. Friends of the Library get questions, and of course, the biggest question is, when is a library going to be open again? Just like, when are things going to be normal, so I can go back to libraries? And I know that there are a lot of factors in play that would affect the timing of when the library can open. But I would encourage the city to outline those, even with the ambiguities that are included in that about when supplies are coming, when these construction projects will be done, when will the roof be done, all of that, and the restructuring, in order that the vacuum isn't filled by stories that people make up. We know that if you have some information that's official and it's accurate, it goes a long ways to solving a lot of things and stopping a lot of rumors. So I know we're getting close to changes in the state with this, and I know that people are looking forward to the library being open, and if it's not going to be open immediately, then people want to know why, and it'd be good to at least offer some explanation of what that's all about. So thank you for doing that, and again, thanks to our librarians for maintaining the services they are providing. The library is appreciated by the community, and people do want to express that in terms through Friends of the Library and our support, and so we're committed to helping the city as we move forward with the opening process. Second thing, from my involvement with Cottage Village, is to remind the city councillors and mayor and others that we are having that open house tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00. We're very excited about that, as stated on the poster that was created for this. We do believe that we are the first rural tiny house village project in the United States, and we can't find anything that's comparable to what we're doing. And so that's really a big deal for Cottage Grove, and I think it's a lot to be celebrated. And I look forward to as many people can come tomorrow to join us in that celebration. So thank you for the city's support of that, and look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item six, there's no public hearings, brings us to item seven, consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item eight, resolution and ordinances. First resolution is authorizing an interfund loan to street fund from Storm Drain Reserve. Ms. Liggins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The street fund applied for and received, or was awarded grant funding from Oregon Department of Transportation for Safe Routes to School Project. However, all of the funds may not be received prior to the close of the grant fiscal year. The good news is, is that today we received the bulk of those grant funds of $1,208,535.85. So it leaves us a balance remaining in the grant of $63,880, round numbers. So the proposal now from staff is not to initiate the entire loan amount, but only to include the $63,880 as our loan amount. The ORS 2944688 allows for the interfund capital transfer if repaid within 10 years. Our proposal is to pay it just as quickly as we receive the grant funding. This amount that's still here is part of a retainage, so the funds have been spent. We can't actually receive the funds for the balance prior to closing of the project. So it's important that on a current-year basis that we cover our expenses and be prepared for being able to pay this back in next year's budget. So you'll be seeing changes proposed in that resolution to adopt the budget as well.
Do we have a resolution number?
2048.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution 2048, authorizing the interfund loan to the street fund from the Storm Drain Reserve Fund.
Ms.? You got a question, Mr. Flack?
We need to amend this for that amount of $63,880.
Yes, please.
Yes, please. So I can go over those changes with you. The capital outlay building improvements will be changed to a decrease of $63,880, leaving $2,379,445 in that line. Transfer to the street fund would go to $63,880 for the adjusted budget of the same amount. And in street fund revenue, it would be an interfund loan proceed this year of $63,880. And again, that would be the same for the total.
Want to amend your motion then? Do you want to amend your motion to those figures?
Want me to make it again?
Amend it to what she?
How do I do that? I have never amended a motion. I'm sorry.
All you need to do is just say that you-
It's a friendly amendment.
Right. And you'll just put in the numbers as Bert described them for the reduced amount because the money came in.
So to amend the Resolution 2048?
Yes.
To the amount of $63,880. Sorry about that, folks.
The second agrees.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on that? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Aye.
Counsel Savage?
Aye.
Counsel Salisbury?
Aye.
Counsel Flack?
Aye.
Counsel Urban?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so item B is resolution transferring appropriations within various funds. Ms. Liggins?
Thank you, Your Honor. ORS 294.450 allows for the transfers appropriations within a fund. It is necessary to move funds within the general fund, municipal court, maintenance, development, community promotions, and non-departmental departments, and the street funds, street maintenance, street capital improvement purchases, and non-departmental departments. And it stayed non-departmental departments this year because it's what it's entitled. This fiscal year, it will be the support, internal support department next year. The resolution reduces the amount in the contingency line items that correlate to the fund in the same amount. As with any reappropriation of funds, the net effect on the bottom line is zero. In the general fund, it's necessary to appropriate money for the contingency line item to municipal court anticipating additional expenditures in contractual services in the amount of $3,000. We have incurred additional personnel expenses in the maintenance department with the addition of a full-time maintenance worker approved earlier in the year by the city council, total amount of $44,095. In the development department, it's anticipated that the city will be paying an additional $10,000 in support of the Main Street program because EBID is unable to pay their portion of this fiscal year due to the inability to bill the local businesses because of COVID. With council approval, an additional $15,000 was provided to community sharing for assistance with utility bills with return of grant funds from the community lending works that was not awarded to local businesses and is included in this resolution. The total of the general fund transfers from the non-departmental department contingency line item is $72,095. In the street department, it's necessary to reappropriate money from the contingency line item, the street department, excuse me, street maintenance department, personnel services, in the amount of $5,600 for costs associated with a miscalculation of wages. In the street capital improvement purchases department, it is necessary to increase the building improvements line item for costs associated with the Safe Routes to Schools project in the amount of $57,900. The non-department contingency line item is reduced by a total of $63,500. It's staff's recommendation that the council adopt the resolution to reappropriate funds within the various funds departments. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
I have a question.
Ms. Savage?
I'm curious about the EBID not able to pay their portion because of the inability to bill. Which fiscal year is that? Would that be 2020 or 2021?
This is for this fiscal year, 2021. So 2021, we've incurred expenses, they weren't able to bill or have businesses pay what they would normally pay because they were closed or affected by COVID.
Right.
So we're covering those costs?
Are we covering all the costs? Or are they putting in a portion? I'm just curious, because I know that some people have paid that bill.
And we have asked them to let us know what funds are available, and we'll bill them for the difference.
Got it.
The total is the 10, and I'm just covering basis in case it doesn't work out.
Got it. So whatever they can put in-
They will.
Got it, is my understanding. Thank you.
Is that correct, Richard?
Yes, that's correct. I believe there, I think the total total is $23,000. We've already put in 10 as our share. The other 13, they're putting, we're covering 10 of it, and I think they may be covering that extra three or four.
Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Flack?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution 2049.
Second. Okay, we have, we have a motion with a second. Hang on. Mr. Roberts, go ahead.
This increase for community sharing, was that from the shower trailer by chance?
No, that is for the H2O program that we took $15,000 and put into community sharing to help residences with utility bills as a result of COVID-19.
Excellent program. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Mr. Flack?
Yeah, and I was just going to disclose, I work for community sharing, but our agency takes $0 in administrative fees, so we don't have a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussions or questions? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Aye.
Counsel Savage?
Aye.
Counsel Salisbury?
Aye.
Counsel Flack?
Aye.
Counsel Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Gow?
Aye. Brings us to item C, resolution concerning state shared revenues. Ms. Liggins?
Thank you, Mayor. ORS 221.770 pertaining to state shared revenues requires cities to adopt an ordinance or resolution stating that they want to receive those state shared revenues. It further requires the cities to pass a resolution stating that the city provides at least four designated municipal services. Provisions of the law require cities to certify that two public hearings were held, one before the Budget Committee and one before the city council, giving citizens an opportunity to comment on uses of state revenue sharing funds. The resolutions concerning state shared revenues are required every year if the city intends to receive these revenues in the following fiscal year. It's staff's recommendation that the council adopt one resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, and adopt another resolution relating to the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenues. These are two separate resolutions that are required.
Ms. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So these will be Resolution 2050 and 2051, is that correct?
Yes.
A move that we adopt Resolution 2050, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Can I do them at the same time?
Yeah.
And Resolution 2051, for the city to adopt a resolution relating to our eligibility to receive state shared revenues on into, on into the future.
Second.
Okay, we have two motions with two seconds on there. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Roberts?
Aye.
Counsel Savage?
Aye.
Counsel Salisbury?
Aye.
Counsel Flack?
Aye.
Counsel Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Gow?
Aye. Okay, brings us to item D, resolution adopting the 2021/22 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing ad valorem taxes.
Final item on the agenda, sir. Thank you. For me, anyway. The City of Cottage Grove Budget Committee has met and approved the 2122 budget. A public hearing before the city council was held on June 14th to receive additional comment. The new fiscal year begins July 1, 2021, and the city is required to adopt a budget for the new fiscal year, no later than June 30th. So right down to the wire here. Staff has incorporated changes that are proposed, both by staff and were brought before the council at the budget hearing, and by public comment. General fund revenues, specifically franchise fees, were increased in the amount of $45,500. And grant revenues increased in the amount of $162,210. In the development department, personnel changes were proposed in the amount of $12,505 with the elimination of an assistant city planner position and the addition of a city planner position. Public Works Development Director Fay Stewart may explain in more detail the proposal at this meeting. The increased grant funding is offset with corresponding grant expenditures in the development department. The request received from the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Development Corporation to partner with Oregon Rain in at least a two-year entrepreneurial development program in the amount of $21,000 for initial year funding has been included. This has been included as a line item in the development department as entrepreneurial development program. Let's see, in the engineering department, the amount requested was not changed, however, an addition error was corrected. The contingency line in the general fund, internal support department, was increased $19,925. The general fund is proposed to increase a total of $207,710 overall since the approval of the budget funding for an appropriation of $11,34,415. A resolution was presented to the council to authorize an interfund loan this evening in the amount of $63,880, and that was approved. So this resolution also reflects the repayment of that debt service in next fiscal year in the same amount of $63,880. It's staff's recommendation that the council consider the changes that have been proposed by staff and requested by the public, make any changes as deemed appropriate, and then approve the resolution adopting the 2021/22 budget, making the appropriations and imposing in categories of the ad valorem taxes. And that would be with the changes proposed, I have a new resolution prepared depending on what you determine you want to do as for next fiscal year's funding. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Ms. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Seth, for all your work on this budget this year. The item that stood out to me was this, the Oregon Rain, as it, well, it potentially provides some exciting opportunities in town, and of course, there's risk involved with putting a substantial amount of money in something that doesn't necessarily guarantee an outcome that we want to see. So I spent a good part of the day calling different city managers and commissioners and everyone that would answer their phone, most called back when I left voicemails, just asking about the program. And these are places that are, have engaged with Oregon Rain, and just talking about their experiences. Some of them had been engaged with Oregon Rain for, you know, maybe three or four years, some less time, different variants of investment being put forward, different ideas about economic development. And I guess I would characterize, I would say, after all of this, I'm in support of doing this for an initial two years. I would like to be very interested to see how it turns out and possibly like to be involved in it going forward, but this is, this is aimed at, I think, the, as it says in the description, the entrepreneur, the, like, the person or the group with an idea, good idea, but may, and maybe with a lot of talent in an area, but doesn't have the whole business sense and picture put together. Maybe they're excellent at design, but not so good at public speaking, or get all the things that need to get either product, a widget, or a service, or an idea out to market. And part of my support of this is I think we have a lot of talent in Cottage Grove. I don't know for sure, but I think this level of investment over, even over two years, I think it's worth the exploration and to see what's out there, because they, Rain seems to provide this. I mean, you would have to have a big team of experts across a wide variety of skillsets to emulate what they're providing, from training, education, just the networking piece, the know-how, the connection with investors and all of it. So I really hope that we, if, given, if we pass this- of it. So I really hope that we, if, given, if we pass this, that we could assist in getting the word out in any way possible, because you kind of get one, one shot really at this if we're going to do this, and, and to see what can be done. I had a lot more thoughts on it, but I think I'll, I'll stop it right there. There was some concerns that I heard. I asked about those, if there was any, and, and none of them were founded. So I'm, I'm in, I'm supportive of this. It could be, it could be a waste, but I don't think it will be here, and I really hope it won't.
Mr. Myers?
And I want to clarify on, on Council Urban a little bit, too. And remember, there is a $25,000 grant that the CDC and, and the Chamber have received a commitment from a local, from the Woodard Foundation to support that. And the annual cost of the program is 33,000, and we're putting in 21 a year for that, and the grant is using the other portion. So it, it is something that is really supported in the community. Some of the examples of how well we believe, and I think, and there was comments made last meeting from, during the public hearing from Matt Parsons and Lynn Blackstone and Caroline as well, about what the program can do and what it's done in other places. But then you also look at what the Chamber's done over the years with their business challenge and some of the other programs that have actually happened, where they've done some things that have helped some of those entrepreneurs get started. This just takes us to the next stage and the next step. And like Council Urban said, yeah, we've got a lot of small businesses, entrepreneurs that are great at making their widget, but they don't know how to bookkeep, they don't know how to market, they don't know all of the pieces of it. And Ariel, who's on here listening to us, and Caroline, that's what they help pull together and, and make those connections with people and get them to where, the catalyst to get them to back to where they need to be and grow. Some of them may be businesses already, but they just need to grow. So, yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah, thank you for a second. Go around. One of the, Mr. Mayor, the, one of the hopes also, well, twofold, is that we could use the federal funds if they are applicable to this, which the Lynn County said they were and are using them. So I would, that, that those could be applied. And I talked with a, a number of people, we, we homed in on the education aspect, like the talent pool from, from the school districts and how important that is in, in feeding in the success of a program like this. And I noticed that there was on their video, a high school integration, like, training program or something like that. And I, I would be in supportive of having, if, if part of this effort would go into entrepreneurial training to the local schools to, to feed in, and, and increase that investment for future. I think that was all the thoughts I had.
Mr. Fleck?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Myers, didn't we have Oregon Rain, and I think it was Fertil Lab, wasn't that the two groups we had a couple of years ago? And if I remember right, we had three or four successful startups over there in that building off of 10. Wasn't that just a couple of years back?
Yes, and Oregon Rain now is, is different than what was then. This is a different organization. There's, they're still doing some things, but it's, and it's kind of confusing with the names. But it is, it is a different organization. They've made some changes, they've pulled off and, and, and done what they're doing now. So it's, it's, it's better than, than what was going on when we first started with the other program. Yeah.
Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would make a motion for a resolution, but do we want to hear from the public first, or what are your thoughts?
We've already had a public hearing. We're not listening to.
Oh, okay. Well, with that, I'll move that the council adopt Resolution 2052.
Second. Have a motion with a second. And before I ask for more, Ms. Lichten raised her hand.
I'd just like to reiterate that the total sum of the budget that you're going to be adopting for 2122 is now $40,320,743. And we've incorporated all of those changes into this resolution that we discussed this evening. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that and that we're, we are living the, the tax rate, that's our permanent tax rate.
Thank you.
As well. Thank you.
So any more discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was a no vote on this. I felt it was gambling taxpayer money a little bit too much, but after talking to Faye Stewart in his office on Friday, I decided to do a little bit of homework on it. I talked to Shawna on Friday night at Art Walk, and today I spent a good amount of time talking to Caroline Cummings and also Matt Parsons on this project and what it can really do. So I have changed my, my vote on this, my idea of what, what needs to be done. I think this could be a really good thing, because one thing I remembered was that Microsoft started in the garage. So maybe something big can happen here in our community with the proper help from these folks. So I wish this program good luck, and I look forward to a report from Oregon Rain for the next budget. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any more discussions? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Council Roberts?
Aye.
Council Savage?
Aye.
Council Solzby?
Aye.
Council Fleck?
Aye.
Council Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Gowen?
Aye. Brings us to item E, Resolution Mending the Comprehensive Fee Schedule. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on April 12, 2020, the City Council adopted Resolution 2043, adopting the City of Cottage Grove five-year utility rate financial plan proposed by FCS Group, starting 2021 to 22. The utility rate increases contained in the approved 2021/22 budget were prepared in accordance with the adopted five-year utility rate financial plan. The attached resolution amends the comprehensive fee schedule to establish the rates for the city's utility systems. The monthly water and storm drainage rates will remain unchanged, and the monthly wastewater rates are increased by 12%, reflecting the adopted five-year utility rate financial plan. The recommendation is for City Council to adopt the resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule.
Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution 2053.
Second.
Okay.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Council Roberts?
Aye.
Council Savage?
Aye.
Council Solzby?
Aye.
Council Fleck?
Aye.
Council Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Gowen?
Aye. Brings us to item nine, Business from the City Council. Item A is Safe Routes to School and Fill More Stormwater Outfall Project Change Order Approval. Mr. Bradzby. Some reason you're still muted. It says you're not, but you are.
Better?
Yeah.
No? All right. Sorry about that. Since December 2020, I have been coming to City Council, asking for approval of change orders due to the, that the aggregate sum of the change orders have been 10% or more of the original contract price. At the December, excuse me, at the May 10, 2021 council meeting, staff presented some changes for change order 10. And then at that time, we talked about the corner or the intersection of South Eighth and Taylor. And staff reported that the engineering firm found an error, and they were willing to stand behind their design and follow up. We were able to solve or correct two of the three corners in May. We did some paving. The, the change order, the, we placed five inches of asphalt at the northeast and the northwest of the ADA rams to make them compliant with current standards. That total was 57, $5,750. This amount will be reimbursed to the city by branch engineering. This will kind of be a pass, pass through. One more change order will be coming hopefully soon. The concrete was poured last week at the southwest corner, and it's tentatively scheduled to get paved this week, but I did not hear from the contractor today as we discussed. That change order, most of it will be again reimbursed by branch engineering. So staff is recommending council to authorize the payments or authorize the item of placing five inches of asphalt at the corner of northeast and northwest corners of South Eighth and Taylor in the amount of 5750. Any questions?
Mr. Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt change order 10 for the Safe Routes project in the amount of $5,750.
Second. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Well, thanks for your hard work, Mr. Bradzby.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Concerns of council. Mr. Fleck?
Well, I, I came in and I thought I heard some discussion about in-person meetings. I guess I just wanted to kind of ask if the city manager has that in his report, or, and then if so, remind city staff that I'm kind of an old buddy daddy, and I still use paper, so I will start needing to get my agenda in paper.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Faye Stewart on the trees that are going to be removed. In that process, did we accept the offer to plant the other trees by the, the groups? Was that?
Yes, that's part of the plan is, is to plant the four redwoods that have been offered by Eco Generation. And then the city will also plant two approved street trees where the existing redwood trees are. So there'll be a total of at least six trees planted to replace those two taken down.
That's good news. I took a drive the other night to cool off. I noticed the median on our street, as you approach Sweet Lane, is still leaking lots of water onto our street. The, the median that goes between the road? Is that the school that's responsible for that, or is that?
Our city staff has been maintaining that. That's the planter strip in our street. And we've, over the years, spent a lot of time trying to maintain that irrigation system. I'll, I'll send staff out there tomorrow to see if they can locate additional leaks.
Cool. And then I want to thank you once again, as I did on air, an incredible job filling in for Richard today on the beeper. That was a lot of great transparency, and I think you should come on more often. That was a lot of information. A lot of the questions that I get asked all the time, you answered them all in that 45, first 45 minutes. So I want to thank you for that. That was absolutely wonderful. And that's all I have.
Anyone else? Well, and I just wanted to say it's a good thing Wednesday's coming. We don't have to, after Wednesday, we can be open back up and have a normal life. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. Brings us to item 10, Business from the City Manager. Item A is Gateway Boulevard Right-of-Way Property Purchase. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in 2015, Cottage Grove System, Transportation System Plan calls for Gateway Boulevard to be extended from Taylor Avenue South along Interstate 5 to Cleveland and south to Sixth Street. A property owner, Butch Gabrielson, owns three tax lots at the address of 32455 McKinley Avenue, which borders the future location of Gateway Boulevard at South Eighth Street. Late in December of 2020, Mr. Gabrielson offered to sell the city a 30-foot-wide strip of land off the north portion of the three tax lots he owns for $6 per square foot to accommodate the future construction of Gateway Boulevard. A total of 13,637 square feet is needed to be purchased at $81,822 for the right-of-way necessary to construct Gateway along Mr. Gabrielson's property. In addition, in 2004, South Eighth Street was extended to the, to the south, and a portion of Gateway Boulevard was constructed along Mr. Gabrielson's property to make a turnaround at the end of Eighth, South Eighth Street. During the construction of the turnaround, six of Mr. Gabrielson's Douglas fir trees were damaged as a result, died, and were later removed. Public Works Director has verified the number of trees and the root damage during the construction through city and Google aerial maps. The approximate value of the trees is $6,000. In addition, a chain-link fence was removed to accommodate the tree removal. Mr. Gabrielson has provided an estimate for the fence removal and reconstruction at $2,000. So staff is recommending that council approve the Gateway Boulevard right-of-way purchase from Mr. Gabrielson for a total of $89,822, which also includes the $8,000 for reimbursement for the six large damaged fir trees, and authorize Mayor Gowen to sign the right-of-way purchase documents. Is there any questions?
Mr. Fleck?
I guess I just comment, you know, we've, we've been looking at doing this for, gosh, many years, almost 20 I've been doing this. So, you know, I think this is a, you know, a good deal staff's brought forward. So I, I full-heartedly support it. And with that, I move that the City Council approve the Gateway Boulevard right-of-way purchase from Mr. Gabrielson for $89,822, which includes the $8,000 of reimbursement for six large damaged Doug fir trees, and authorize Mayor Gowen to sign the right-of-way purchase documents.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd, I'd like to add, as this community grows, this gateway loop is going to be much needed. It'll take a lot of pressure off Main Street, which is already getting crowded at certain times. So I, I agree with all this. I think it's going to be a good thing. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, item B is Information Update Regarding City-Owned Home at 78030 Highway 99. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council might remember back in August of 2019, the property at 78030 Highway 99 came up for sale, and council authorized the purchase of, of that property. The intent of the purchase was to acquire the necessary property to construct our street from Emerson Lane and connect it into Highway 99. This, this project has been involved, very involved, and I wanted to give an update as to the status. So for the first year, we had renters in, in the place, but they purchased the property out Kennedy Lane and moved, so we haven't had any additional renters, and the house is set vacant. We regularly check it. We've mowed out there three times this year, and we recently went out and did some touch-up mowing to bring the property into full compliance with our, our codes regarding hazardous materials. The property was annexed and rezoned, and we engaged with a surveyor to survey the property and complete the partitioning necessary for the road right-of-way for our street. That has not been fully completed. I believe that the survey is under review, and once it's approved, we can get out and final-stake the survey lines and complete the partition, which will also allow us to construct a fence along the right-of-way so that there's a clear understanding of where the, the new property lines are going to be. City staff has taken the time to clean up all the exterior. There was several outbuildings, blackberries, quite a... There were several outbuildings, blackberries, quite a mess that was left after staff cleaned it up. We also worked very hard in cleaning up the drainage system there. The ditch was overgrown with blackberries, silted in pretty good, and staff got it to where it at least flows well to ODOT. Additional work needs to be done with ODOT to improve the drainage, but that's another Where currently, we installed a water meter. This property is on city sewer. Now that it's been annexed, we are working to hook it to city water, so it's fully served by city services before it's sold. So at this point, we still need to connect the house to the water from the water meter. We need to complete the survey, which is close. We're also applying for a new driveway approach from ODOT to move the driveway, the current driveway, to the southern boundary of the property, because the new our street will essentially take up the existing driveway. This will create a safe on and in and out of the property and not be inhibited by the future our street. So once we receive the approval from ODOT, which we expect within the next 60 days, staff will construct a driveway. We will need to pave a portion of it to meet city code, build the fence along the property line, and then we'll do minimum amount of cleaning on the interior. There is a couple items that need to be repaired inside the house, and once those are completed, we aim to get it listed for sale in hopes of taking advantage of the nice real estate market. So I'm hoping at the latest, by the end of the summer, we can accomplish all this work and get the property sold and back into private ownership. Would there be any questions?
Mr. Flack?
So, this is the property we're talking about, where the citizen complained about the city's grass being higher than the, yeah. So I guess I just want to kind of go there. I'm assuming that our community development folks, if they're out looking at grass height and see that some city property is tall, that they're going to treat the city the same as any citizen and give them notice that they need to cut it, correct?
That's correct, yes. And I would share, it's been a little bit challenging this year. The dry weather has hit us much quicker. I mean, nobody envisioned going from an average of 77 degrees to setting record-high temperatures well in excess of 100 degrees. So that caught us. And then, the other is, is with Mr. Mongan taking the job down at Roseburg. That has left us a staff person short. And so, we've, on our current, in sweep of the town, looking for properties that are out of compliance, we're about two-thirds of the way done and sent off two-thirds of the letter, but we still have a third of the community to complete the first round. So we're trying very hard with the resources we have. And as you said, we treat, the city gets tall grass complaints for, you know, pieces of right-of-way that we've forgotten that needs to be mowed or around our park areas. We're treated just the same as all those citizens.
So, and I guess that's the point I would like to make, is, you know, my agency, right now, I'm struggling trying to find volunteers, and I may end up, most of it's mowed, but we do have those pesky dandelions right now, so we may get one. But I've had the city do this, I've worked with them, I've gone out, made sure that I get a compliance. So, you know, I guess, the way this was portrayed to me is that the city is held to a different standard than the citizens. And I would have a problem if that were true, but as you're saying, and my, you know, experience is that the city does this. I mean, they charge permit fees when the city's doing projects, and I know that sounds odd to the citizen that one department's going to charge a fee to another, but that's in all of what the city does to make sure that they're treating everybody the same. And I guess I just want to establish that that's the case, and that I really appreciate what you guys are doing, and, you know, let's keep on doing the good work.
Mr. Myers?
And I want to add, Counsel Flack, to your comments a little bit, too. I think it's really important to note that we're not harassing citizens with these letters. I mean, we send a letter to the property owner or the property person that's there. Harassment would be posting pictures of the yards on Facebook and not sending the letters until the next week.
Okay, so, any more discussion on that one? Okay, we will move on to report from the city manager.
Just a few items. One is, we're excited. Last Friday, the governor says that come June 30th, whether we have 70% or not, we're going to get rid of all of our restrictions. We're excited by that. Staff will be meeting on Wednesday, and we're going to be figuring out how we're going to do all that, what it means for all the things we've done as part of COVID. We'll be probably keeping some things. I mean, we'll probably keep our sneeze guards, for lack of a better term, in place and places until we see what OROSHA is going to do on some of those things. And we'll be also talking with the chamber and some of our local businesses. What do we want to do with curbside pickups now that that's kind of moving away? So we'll be kind of getting an idea on those. But we do know that July 1, you have a special meeting scheduled. We have it scheduled right now for 5:30. If that time works for everyone, that would be great. If you need to do it later, let us know right now, right here, so we can know, because we'll have to get that notice out. We don't know if we're going to have this library roof, if we're going to have some bidders on that. And there are some, it's amazing the amount of things or the type of things that are difficult to get materials and supplies because of still businesses not open from COVID or stopped producing during COVID, and there's a shortage on those. But we're hoping that we'll have that. We also have another item that we want to bring up as well, that day as well, another bid that we want to open, and that's going to be opened, that we want to present as well in awards. So it will be a very short meeting. We will only do those awards and everything. If 5:30 works for everyone, we want to know for sure. Otherwise, we'll move it later if we need to.
I'm actually going out of town on July 1st in the evening.
Okay. Can you join us virtually, maybe? Or are you going to be traveling then?
I'll actually be on the road, but I could probably get on my phone and do it virtually.
Okay. 5:30 work then for you doing that? You'd still be in service somewhere? Go. Any others? I didn't see in the council chambers.
Everybody inside is okay? So if Mr. Irvin and Mr. Flack are there, we definitely have a quorum, so.
And so, we'll still do some virtual, because the legislation passed that we have to continue to do that. But you are welcome to come to the council meeting July 1 and join us in there, in your old seats or maybe new seats. Maybe we'll move them around a little bit, just for the fun of it. But you can do that. There will be no checking for vaccines, no masks required, and we'll be able to move forward that way.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Irvin?
Sure did.
Okay.
So, and then, moving forward with July 19th, your next scheduled council meeting, we will be doing that live in the council chambers. But feel free to join virtually if you really have to or need to, because we'll be continuing to do this. Bruce Kelch brought up the Cottage Village Open House. I just wanted to remind on that coming up tomorrow. Please show support. It's really exciting to see the other homes finished and that moving forward. Have met with the symphony, and the symphony is coming on Monday, July 26th, at 7:30 to 7, 7:30 to 9, 7:30 to 7, 7:30 to 9, and they will be performing in the amphitheater there in Bohemia Park. We will not be collecting sponsorships. We will not be doing any kind of sponsorships from businesses. There won't be tables set in the center. So if you want to bring a blanket, you want to bring small chairs, you can sit down there close to the stage. We will be bringing in the bleachers as well, so that people can spread out if they want to. But it's exciting. They are very excited to come play in Cottage Grove. They have not been able to play together. If you can imagine, most of the instruments in the symphony, they're blowing out through their instrument and then spitting and all this kind of stuff, which is, they just couldn't do. And so, they're really excited to get back in. We have a great soloist coming as well. They've got some wonderful things planned and some exciting things. So please, mark that on your calendars. You shouldn't have anything that night, because it was a council meeting and we've canceled that. So you can be there for that. It should be a great family event and lots of fun. The library, we are probably going to try to plan on doing something starting July 6th. We're meeting Wednesday again on that. Now that you've adopted the budget, we can move forward with getting our recruitment going for the positions there and get those filled, but we may have some limited hours as we move through July and start getting that put back together. The library in the park program has been very successful, and we're trying to figure out if we want to continue to do that even when the library's open, just because it's a great outreach program beyond the library and doing that. So watch for that, and we'll probably continue to do that. Community Center as well, we're talking about getting that open. Senior Center will probably still be closed. They're not quite ready to get back into the swing of things. But South Valley Athletics, the genealogical library will be open as well in the building as we move forward, and that'll probably be starting on the 6th as well, so we can get that going there. 17th and 18th, Saturday and Sunday, July 17th to 18th, mark that. It's BMD. If you haven't built your Orcart to race yet, get that going, so you can race your Orcart in the Orcart races. And they're looking forward to doing that, and they're going to be doing it all downtown on Main Street and in the downtown core, trying to get people down there and do that. And it will be a smaller venue, a smaller operation, just because they're trying not to go out and ask for money as well from businesses. They know this is not the year to do that yet, but they want to do something, and so they're doing that. There will be the three parades, the Kitty Parade, the Bloomers Parade will be downtown, and then the Grand Miners Parade will be in its traditional location on 10th Street and up Main. And over the weekend, we did have some cooling shelters in the city. Since I haven't been there, I've been in a much cooler climate, just luckily, and it's starting to get warmer now and change back the way it usually is. But Jake could probably report. I believe there were 48 people who used the resource of the cooling facilities over the weekend. So I'd ask him to kind of give a real brief report, since I haven't gotten all of that.
It was actually, we had 32 people throughout Saturday and Sunday who used the community center, a few of whom were there pretty much all day. We had it at 10:00 AM, sundown. And we had a number of people that came in and out, especially during the hottest parts of the day. We also, today, it wasn't nearly as hot, but we had a couple people hang out in the lobby of Steve Hall today for a little bit of cooling as well. So it seems to have been successful. We got a number of kudos from the folks who were doing it, you know, who were experiencing the hot temperatures and appreciated being there. We were lucky enough to have a lot of fantastic volunteers who were willing to drop their weekends and jump right in to help with this. We really appreciate that.
And thank you to community sharing for providing some food, apparently. And then, we had water, cold water and stuff available as well, so, thanks. And let me check my list. I think that is the extent of my report.
And I just want to say, I forgot on concerns, but congratulations on Emma's wedding. It was really nice to go to that ring ceremony. She was absolutely beautiful. I know you're still having part of that reception back there, so it was really a nice event, and I'm glad I was got to be included in it.
Yeah. And we, you know, talking about the Armory, we've had other events in there. We haven't had anybody else request. We've been in discussion with the skate, roller skating. So now that things are opening up, we'll probably really be in discussion with them now, and they'll be able to get something moving forward as well and get on a roll, just throw that in. But yeah, but yeah, so, and that's moving forward. We had some great, great comments about what the Armory looks like. I think the chamber commented about it with the retreat, people that came as well for the reception in the Armory, the work that was done over the pandemic in the company room and the foyer. It is gorgeous, and there's still more to do, and we'll be doing those as, we've got some things that have already been planned for later in the summer. People were signing up and saying, yeah, let's put it on the calendar. Tentatively, maybe we won't be able to do it, but with the 30th rolling around, those will really start kicking off, and it'll be exciting, and lots of stuff will be going on there again, so.
All right. And so, we have no attorney, so we are adjourned.